The board group, this is one I reminded everybody to vote on number six if you haven't noticed we're running a bond. So if you would like to each take one home, we're going to be putting these up next week. You'll see them all over the place and yeah, just encouraging people to vote and to go to the back of their ballot. Because our proposition one is on the back, on the bottom of the ballot. So make sure you fill out your entire ballot or at least on the back. I'm not picky, I just don't do that. Okay, all right, let's get started. You're going to see some familiar faces at the table and other people around the room might trip in a little bit because we're going to take a look at how we're doing as a district. We do this every year. We just want to make sure that you know how things are going in terms of our strategic plan. So this is just a quick progress update for you. It's it's basically just to give you a basic understanding of where we're at with the process. Give you some information on how how we're doing with our goals, the five aspiration goals. And then talk about the considerations, the next steps, things we're seeing. But what this study session is not about is going in depth or in little detail about one of the goals because that's what the other study sessions are for. And that's that's what we're going to look at tonight. We always start with our promise, wherever we are, wherever we go, and whatever we talk about. Because this is truly why we do what we do. All kids, no value support and the incredible staff that surrounds them, teachers, support staff. It's all about getting kids to ring that bell at graduation and they go on to do something incredible with their lives. And the people in these pictures, every single one of them helped. From Teresa Washington, our Native American coordinator, Brandon Anderson, Tony Martin, I mean, teachers at Donald Weisman, teachers at Eli, all the staff there. And by like elementary, the celebration parade, the growth parade, just a fabulous event where all kids are celebrated. That's that's what we do. And then in our strategic plan, you know that we have basically three rings to the plan. Always our core mission is student learning. It focuses on our promise. We have our portrait of graduate and then the goals that measure the success toward that. And then the instructional effectiveness. And then the operational effectiveness that we call sort of the great protectors of the district. They make sure that everything around our teachers, our staff, our students is operational, it's working. And that's everything from like air conditioning to heat to plumbing and water. And when we have kids learning in when we have kids learning in areas where they shouldn't be learning, whether it's a flex area, a hallway, they still make things work. And if we if we can pass a bond, we can provide students with more space to learn and do an even better job of what we're currently doing. Good news, we are ranked seventeenth in the state now. That's up from twentieth. Last year, 295 school districts in Washington State were ranked seventeenth. We're really proud of that. That means we're competing with top tier school districts, Bellevue, Mercer Island, Lake Washington, and then smaller districts, Deringer, University Place, Carbonado. But we are ranked seventeenth, so we are. I want to say we're on the map, not, there's no pun intended, but people are looking to the Southern Bunny Lake School District to find out what we're doing. And again, it's all about it's all because of the people you just saw in those pictures. Statewide update. What we want to do is take you on a little journey that funnels you down to our district. Because I think it's important for you to see how this date is doing. We want to talk to you about a few little updates and changes that the state suddenly made. Kelly, you can explain this real quick.
Yeah, so we had this OSPI statewide webinar and then there was this kind of news release bulletin and we didn't have any notice that this was happening. So in the past, the state, when we looked at our smarter balanced assessment scores and our science scores, we were always looking at a level three or four as what we understood as meeting standard. So that's how we built our strategic plan. That's how our school improvement plans are built, you know, at each of our schools. So what happened through OSPI is they sort of articulated more meaning behind the score. So what they felt was that the, you know, our community around our state was looking and believing that a level three or four, quote unquote, was passing and what they what they kind of redefined it is, is that a level two really means that students are meeting that foundational learning standards for that grade level. And they rekind of like clarify that a level three or four is really meaning that a student is meeting college readiness. So it just kind of redefined what the levels were. So Lori's going to show you a couple of slides. So when you look at what what's up here, on the left hand side, you can see there's four math bars together that show the four years, four year period of time and then English language arts. And if you look at those percentages, they obviously look a lot higher than the same bars that you see on the right or on the right hand side. So on the left is all students earning a two, three or four. And again, the state's calling it foundational grade level standards. And on the right hand side, now a level three is being defined by the state as being college ready. So again, it just kind of came out and Chris Reichdahl had a big explanation around, you know, what is this, you know, what is on, you know, the state test and why they kind of made that determination. So again, it was new for us, no advance warning. It just kind of came out and it was, here it is. So and then Lori's going to show another slide in a second. That's going to going to look a little bit different too. So it's how do we now look at this data in a different way, interpret it in a different way? So.
Any questions about this before we move on? Because this was new to us.
I'm glad it was clarified because when I when I saw the student earning three or four, that's what I've been used to seeing. But then I saw at the top it said meet college readiness, so I assumed that might be the high school scores.
Yeah, yeah, great question, yeah.
So I like this is even less clear probably to the public.
No, I'm so glad you said that because I didn't understand the difference between the two. And I think somewhere off there was foundational, college readiness and there was discrepancy and I wasn't understanding that, so.
Yeah, they're using foundational for the level two. That's a great catch. And like what what's interesting too is a slide that Lori will have in here. They changed the vernacular a little bit between what you see here versus when you pull up a school on OSP's report card. So it's sort of, it's sort of interesting, so.
I was just holding my breath, waiting for you to say which way that was going to fall. We were going to find out that three and four was not.
Oh, no.
I was kind of waiting for you to finish like, okay, which way did that fall?
Like we've been doing it wrong, we need to be in my world.
All of a sudden now we're.
Surprise.
Glad to hear.
I know, yeah.
So this was math. And then as Kelly said, this is English language arts, but it did, it really did take us by surprise. I mean, like actually, we were texting back and forth during the webinar, like, what's going on here?
Did you see that? Did you see the announcement just drop?
Right. So again, the students earning a two, three or four and then just students earning a three or four. But what you're going to see in our scores that we report to you tonight, they're only based on three or four. We didn't base them on the two, three or four. And so like our goals and things like that are all based on the three, four, not the two. Right. We'd probably feel better about ourselves.
Yeah.
If they weren't two, three or four, but we're keeping it with a three or four. Oh, I'm sorry, here's the minute. And and you're going to see, I mean, even statewide, we're struggling in math. And we'll talk about that in a little bit, but math is definitely an area of concern for us. So here's the report card that Kelly was telling you about.
Yeah, if you look at where Lori put the arrow on there. If you look over on the left side on that row for assessment, notice they use the word foundational over there. So that foundational is what you were just saying, Jamie, that's the level two, three and four. And then you look on the right side, they don't use the word college readiness. Once you, when you're on OSP's report card, you can click in. It's just interesting that they have it on the one page, but they didn't use that same language when you click the button to dive in at that school level. So when you look at it, you really need to know that, you know, on the left, that's a two, three or four. And then when you're over here on the right, on the consistent grade level knowledge and above, notice that little word, that's just levels threes and fours. So that was a little, it's kind of confusing, like why the state didn't keep the same language. And I, we don't have control over how OSP reports it on there, but that's, that's what it is. So there was that, I, I, I wish that the language was the same, but it, they, they just, they didn't do it that way.
I was just going to say, I actually prefer the consistent grade level knowledge towards to college readiness because it does expand the and it's not off putting for those who don't.
That was one of the comments that people made too about using that word college because not all students have that goal to go to college. It's why isn't it like career and college readiness or so there has been a little bit, I forgot.
Or just the consistent grade level knowledge. I'm pretty shocked by these. I'm really glad to hear this. Let us talk about these changes and put it into perspective.
Well, I mean, we have to tell you again, like, we just found out about these. I mean, so this is brand new and, you know, and every one of our schools has this report card linked to their website. So we thought it was important to see what it looks like when parents do put on the, the school level report card. Because not, the language isn't consistent and it will probably be unclear for many people. Okay, so that's how the state looks. That's like how the county looks. As a county, we are ranked third in ELA. And we made sure to put an asterisk there that our scores are based on the level three and four. That you know that that's where we're at. Deringer University Place, a little bit better than we did, Carbonado. But you can see Deringer and Carbonado, well, we get a lot of Deringer kids. And some, a fair, like a few Carbonado, but really proud of that performance and you can see where the state formed as well at fifty point three. So third in ELA and fifth in math, barely. I mean, peninsula squeaked by with point two, but so we were ranked fourth last year in in math and ELA, so we went up in ELA and want to say down. Oh, we're almost the same in in math, but again, Carbonado, Deringer, University Place, top three.
Right, Megan.
Yeah.
So Carbonado and Deringer are the K through eight.
Right.
So like starts, there's four, then we go to the eighth grade, ours takes in all of it. And we've seen enough data that in high school, sometimes it tails off until the eleventh grade pops back in.
So really, Paul, we would be third.
I like that.
And if you want to go back to this, we could be second.
I like the way you think.
Well, yeah, well, ELA is a little different though. I mean, high school still performed very well at ELA, but but the math, and you've explained it that, well, it's not working great, so we don't do it until all of a sudden, eleventh grade, they need to do it.
Yep. Well, and you can see how the state performed in math as well, based on the level three and four. So again, seventeenth in the state. I mean, we're ranked quite high in the county, especially like higher if you take out the K eight. But again, just really proud of that performance.
And we're the biggest district up there, when you think about like district our size or.
Any questions about that before we move on? So now, we just want to remind you how this all works in our, in our district. We, we take a lot of pride in a tight alignment where we want to make sure that our strategic plan gets to the kid. And everything in between is aligned and works together, is connected, coherent, cohesive, you name it. And whether it's the school improvement plans or whether it's operational goals, we just want to make sure that what we're doing here sticks together, which is why we aren't a school district that all of a sudden just takes on the latest and greatest the shiny penny, right? We, we stick with what we think works and based on our data, it's showing that it does work. We try to stay away from the random act of brilliance, right? Now, the following slides, just want to make sure you know how to read them because I made you this little key. So if you see something in red, that school didn't meet benchmark or we didn't meet a benchmark. And again, those benchmarks are criteria. We set those for ourselves. And most of them, we set mine because we have incredibly high expectations for student performance. The green means they met benchmark. If you see a little down arrow that's red, we had a decrease in performance and obviously the up arrow in green is increase. So let's take a look at bowl one, Beth Beckman. Third grade. We're looking at ELA. What do you notice? The twenty-two, twenty-three screen.
Things I first noticed. Yeah, parentheses. C seventy-one.
Yeah.
Up to your, your benchmark.
Yeah.
Which then means that we had more red.
Right. So I'm so glad you noticed that because you were like, oh, we're at sixty-seven point one, sixty-nine is going to be easy. So we increased it to seventy-one point four. And then, so we kind of shot ourselves in the foot because if we would have left it at sixty-nine, we put a benchmark, we were like, no, we can, you know, we can do this. And I appreciate that spirit that we want to, I mean, we want to compete, right? Against ourselves to get better, but I'm glad you noticed that, Paul, because yeah, quite a few of our schools would have, yeah.
You know what else I noticed?
Yeah.
You color coded this, both arrows, you know, up and down, and it was easy to read. I didn't really pay that much attention to the red blocks that were, didn't beat the goal because I did notice that, oh, they up what they wanted to achieve. But I did pay particular attention to the arrows. And then some of them were just up, down, that didn't really cause me but I did notice a couple of big changes.
Well, Liberty Ridge went forty-seven to sixty-eight. That's hard work. That's, that's tough teaching. And well, I'm going to tell you, even the seventy-five to seventy-six, you know, when you're at seventy-five, to get to seventy-six is, that's tough. And eighty to eighty-two. Anything else you notice about that? That you want to comment on? Kelly, David or two, anything on that? Okay, so next year our benchmark. Because we were like, oh, seventy-one point four, that means we have to increase the, the twenty-two, twenty-five benchmark. Did we get to add two? Right, so it's like, um, we'll see. But what this shows us though is that if we keep, if we really keep striving to reach that eighty percent in twenty-twenty-six, the data shows us even countywide, statewide, we're still performing well above the, the average, so.
Are there any programs in any of the schools that for one reason or another, put them in a higher or a lower bracket based on the student population that might be?
What do you guys think there?
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, there are, so. SBA scores, I'm thinking, we have this other measurement that we use for SBA. I mean, it's just really how many kids are at that particular building at that grade level. I know sometimes if we have, let's say there's a, a school where there's say two third grade teachers or three third grade teachers. And you have one teacher who's out with a long-term sub. I mean, sometimes the quality of the teacher matters so much that sometimes just, you know, a long-term sub can impact particular scores at a building. And when they don't have that many students at third grade, their data is so, it's just, it fluctuates so much, you know, at a high school, it's a lot harder. And if you have one tenth grade math teacher, you don't notice that variance as much. So elementary can be really volatile depending on, you know, a teacher in, out, that type of a thing. If a school has a lot of students, and see Karen back there, so you're going to help me, Karen. But if a student has a lot, or a school has a lot of students who have an IEP. And we can sometimes see, I mean, students have an IEP for a reason. And so if you have a school, larger population, lots of students with an IEP for reading per se, you're going to notice some lower SBA scores for those students. They have the IEP for the reason. So sometimes that can make a little bit of a difference. And then WA, AIM though, that's the alternate test, our like lowest cognitive level students would take, that's not incorporated into the SBA scores. That's a different, that, it does get incorporated into a different measurement that the state uses for us, so. Sure, that was a long explanation.
Thank you. But JB, like they all have a student specialist and they all, we all have basic, some of the same basic goals.
Yep.
Because I didn't know if you asked about like if one school has a, like a tall heights of special program that another school doesn't or.
Okay, so like highly capable, so Emerald Hills does have one class of highly capable third graders, fourth graders and fifth graders. So we, we disaggregate that data. So we'll take Emerald Hills data, we'll take out the high cap classroom and then look to see what was their SBA scores without high cap. How much should high cap impact them compared to their classrooms? But that's the only building that has like a high cap and the other buildings, I would say, are pretty much the same as far as programming goes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Intervention classes.
Yes, yeah, same, yeah.
But six out of the nine elementaries made progress. This is our benchmark. But a lot of, there's a lot to be proud of right there, yeah.
I've been looking, I mean, they're all, when you go up, daffodils, I'm very impressed with because I know the more reduced.
Yeah.
And those types of things. I mean, they're all great, that one sticks out to me.
Oh, I, I just got this last night and I forgot it, but the percentage by the wolf is it is significant.
Large number of newcomers coming to the United States within the last two years and students in the ML typically do not meet standard until they so many, many students are the highest number.
Hey, let's take a look at math, third grade.
Benchmark again.
I know. Right, remove that benchmark and gosh dang it. Because well, we, that benchmark in twenty-twenty-three at sixty, we kind of blew it out of the water at seventy. We were like, well, we have, we can't go backwards. So we thought seventy-four would be reasonable, but yeah, we're struggling on that. And you've seen it, I mean, you've seen the plan, you've seen what we're going to do, Kelly can remind you of a few highlights of that, but math is, that is an area where we're concerned.
Well, one of the positives is Liberty Ridge went fifty-three to sixty-five.
Yeah.
And on the ELA third grade, they jumped twenty twice as well. Kudos to Liberty Ridge.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, last year, one of the action steps at Liberty Ridge is they are a title school. And so in their title school, I think one time per month, they use title funds to sub out teachers. And then they were doing some work together, you know, kind of like a PLC, looking at lessons, looking at data, et cetera. And so then, I mean, you can see the results of that kind of targeted work and they do benefit from extra title funding. So they can do those types of things, but that was just one thing they really, it was every single month throughout the school year that they did that targeted work, so.
Well, sure. But pressure we're a little concerned about, dropping twenty points like that.
Yeah, those are the things where we'll meet, you know, Beth and I will meet with the principal too, to figure out like what was happening at that school. What, you know, what happened in third grade there last year? What, you know, did you, you know, what were the extenuating circumstances? You know, did you have a brand new teacher? Did you have a teacher out? Do you, did you move grade levels of teachers, really talking through like what does that look like? And then how do we, you know, make those changes so that we get better results the following year? So you really have to dive in and go, what was different about that school year? Why did you, you know, why, why did you see that swing in numbers like that? And again, there are different cohorts of kids, the kids you see in twenty-two, twenty-three are not the kids you see in twenty-three, twenty-four. So it's a totally different set of kids. So you have to, you know, kind of take that into consideration as well.
Right, so we'll watch those kids now as fourth graders to see how they performed.
Yeah.
But Emerald Hills dropped ten points, which is great. That's tough work. I mean, I hope people realize that, like, it's hard to make, to make gains like that. Especially when kids are coming in either skill deficient or with mental health issues. Our staff are working hard to, to make these gains. So our benchmark for the current year is seventy-seven. We're going to do it. We'll never be accused of being underachievers.
Maybe.
Or, or inspector. Okay, so let's look at fifth grade. We raised that benchmark from seventy-one to seventy-four. And yeah. The numbers sort of speak for themselves.
I would say the principals were really surprised on this one. They didn't expect to see a drop like that in fifth grade. And so there was lots of conversations with them around, you know, because people are really, they started this kind of focus in on mathematics a little bit. And so it was sort of strange about people really naming what they thought was happening and they're building around that number. So this has been, this has been, you know, how do you keep your finger on the work that's happening in ELA? While at the same time, you're trying to increase what's happening in mathematics? Because at elementary, these are the same exact teachers. And so you're putting more on their plate and they're still having to balance those. So this is a, this is a constant conversation with us around how do we, how do, how do we manage that, so.
And then these are our current sixth grade students, but if I were a middle school principal, I would have been looking at these scores. Really wondering if we needed to do or what we could do to support these students coming in.
Yeah, our research and assessment director has been working in this platform we have called Home Room. And so what it's able to do right now, so the middle school principal, so what happens is you have the elementary scores, but middle school principals want to know who are the kids that are coming to them because they come from multiple elementary schools. So the way that the platform works now is they can see their current sixth graders. It automatically will show them their fifth grade SBA, their fourth grade, their third grade as their cohort. And so it's super slick to kind of see what their progress has been over time. And you're not just looking at who might be my feeder elementary schools, they're your, they're your kids. So that's something that's kind of new that principals have been looking at this year as well, which is really cool.
So Kelly, as you're looking at, as principals are looking at these, are we looking more of it like longitudinally? Because I know that tests are changed and our times are all surprised when we get the scores because the, the test is significantly different. So when I look at it, two years is kind of difficult. Do you guys look at more of, more of a block than just a two-year?
Yeah, and the SBA test has changed, so if you even go back four years, it's, it looks different now. And that's one of the big concerns on math is people are, that people feel, teachers feel like they've taken the test down to fewer questions. So students don't have the opportunity to really show what they know. And so they feel like this, even though they shrunk the test a little bit, if you don't have multiple opportunities, then it might be deflating scores. And there's questions that are on there that are pilot questions that they don't, they just, you know, the state's using them to see how many kids are getting it right, what are they missing, et cetera? So student, I mean, it's, it's hard to even kind of glance to see what students are doing sometimes, to know what's counted and what's not counted. But the change in test has been a, that's been a wondering.
It's a show demonstration, start to increase the amount of opportunities.
Yeah.
In the past, you've talked about easy questions and then they kind of so that it's, it's taking every student to the maximum of what they can, what they with these tests that are doing less questions, are they just kind of hitting the kids with the harder questions right at the front instead of letting them kind of warm up?
Yeah.
To that level?
One part of the test is a computer adaptive test and the other part isn't, but that, I, I don't, yeah, so they have, I, I don't know the exact metrics behind it, but yes, the way the theory kind of works is they'll give a student a question and then if they get it right, it, it does adjust the grade, the, the types of questions that students are getting to figure out whether it is that level two, level three type response. But there's, there's less than there used to be, so that, that, you know, your ability to kind of move within it has definitely, has changed.
So fifth grade math. Mathematics, I mean, we might not have a benchmark, but six of our schools made improvements and some of them are significant. Let's look at Liberty Ridge. Emerald Hills. And Tallahassee only dropping by one is
The eighties is still.
It is. Bunny Lake Elementary seems to be dropping on all, just to from high to they went from seventy-one to sixty-four in ELA, you're right, and then, then in the third grade as well.
The same, when you look at elementary, it's same teachers. So like when you look at middle school, like, just like, yeah, so you're, yeah, you're thinking like we're thinking it's, so what's happening in those classrooms? What do these students need for support? What does the teacher need for support? What's different in our classroom configuration this spring year? Those are like all the conversations that we're having with principals. Yeah, cohort, cohorts make a huge difference too. And it's like taking those same students, what were their fourth grade SBA scores, what were their third grade? Because even though this shows down, it could be that they're up from the previous. Because even though this shows down, it could be that they're up from the previous year. And so that's what doesn't show on this, is just one snapshot of data and looking at it by cohort could tell a totally different story. So that's, yeah, it's important that we're looking at all of those things.
Well, I mean, I just want to give a shout out to Donald Ice. I mean, I know there's still, um, there's scores on sixty two, but that school, you have to remember, is at a hundred and forty eight percent capacity. I mean, it's a full and a half within one school. So. There are a lot of kids. And then sixty two percent of them in fifth grade meet standard. It's probably not what we want, but yeah, that's, I mean, that's not bad. Hey, let's look at Sarah Dunn. Sarah, feel free to um. Talk about or talk us through these, but uh we wanted to talk about attendance on the data by overseas school too. So you can see where we were and where we are and talk about how we kind of tweaked that a little bit.
Absolutely. So um if you remember back to the, if you look back to the report card page from Bonning Lake Elementary. OSBI uses a percentage of kids who are not, are um consistent attenders. And so if you remember in previous years, we'd say like sixty percent of our kids had ninety percent attendance or better. And it became really confusing to say, what is that percentage? You're describing a percent of a percent. And so we made the, our goal has always been ninety five percent of students will attend school daily. And so we made an adjustment to that measure of progress to match that goal. So you see now that's, so on any given day in twenty three, twenty four, ninety two percent of K five kids were in school. That's what that means. Which is going to be different than your percent of consistent attenders. But again, if I get ninety five percent of the kid there, then I am reducing the amount of chronic absenteeism. So it's a much, not only a more straightforward way to look at it, it's more actionable. Because I can look and coming up in November, you're going to hear a study session, we're going to go more in depth into this and the attendance work. And Sarah and the team will really go in depth, but that's, hopefully this is a much more straightforward way to look at and a more actionable way to uh communicate it.
I think um we thought parents would understand that also. The other one is like, what's the percent of the percent of the percent?
Well, and I remember sitting in this meeting and we're looking, and we are looking at it going, but only sixty percent of our kids are there? Well, no, sixty percent of our kids are ninety, are there ninety percent of the time. And so that could be a confusing way to look at. This is much more understandable.
Well, it lowers the, it lowers the goal. I mean, ideally, the goal would be a hundred percent. Yeah, that's not realistic, but that should be the goal, not ninety percent. So if you're trying to set ninety percent as your goal, it's easier to look at, what is it out of a hundred percent?
Right.
And while I've never been a high school administrator, I would think eighty seven percent is not bad.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I know, I used to laugh at senior skip day and I said, if you want to shock me, just have senior show up day. You really want to shock me? Just have a day where a hundred percent of the seniors show up and I'll be super excited. But do you see the, the growth, right? Twenty, twenty two, twenty three to twenty three, twenty four. And again, even that, that ninety two percent over ninety one, again, those are, when you, when you're already run, already running a five minute mile. Making incremental changes or incremental.
I appreciate what Sarah and her team are doing with the attendance, all the reminders, the push, like come to school. The positive, the positive fortune to be here.
Right.
The other happens, right? Um, but we know that, I mean, I see it all the time in the newsletters. Thank you for all that work.
Well, the reasons for having the absenteeism, the list of possible reasons grows as they move from K five to middle school, high school. Just being sick to, when you're in high school, you could be, you know, a lot more things that can pull you out of school. I see a five percent increase in middle school. Again, you have more reasons to be absent in middle school as you grow older. Five percent is a huge jump. And when you take that into consideration. It's changed every grade, you know?
Very true. Very true. And then if you look at the second one, um the students feel safe. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, so just a reminder, right, that um when we talked about a hundred percent of students will feel safe. We are using that one question in the CE data, but we recognize that. There's a lot of reasons that people will put down that they're not safe and some of those reasons have nothing to do with the school itself. Right? They might have to do with your internal context, the family context, their interpersonal context. Which is why then we also look at those, do you know an adult? Um, and does an adult know you? And so. That's what we look at.
And it's good to see that those haven't changed. We'd like to see people up.
And just so you know, the CE data is taken uh by students in fourth grade and above. So that, so it does not capture. Fourth grade. And we do have other measures, like counselors are talking to students, they will talk to students in the fourth grade, but the CE data. Is exclusively for students in the fourth grade and above.
So true. Take a look at eighth grade, middle school. That time of life. So last year, we met benchmark. Why not? Let's just. Increase that benchmark from sixty nine point five to seventy one point eight. But as you can see. Did not perform like we wanted to.
How long does it usually take to get these scores to? Start the process of sitting down with these administrators and starting the topic? Is that one month process, two month, three month? Usually take you to kind of dig into.
No, 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 no. As soon as the students are in the system taking the test, principals are in there like daily, wanting to know what student scores are. So in the tide system, as they get scored, it, you start, you can see how many students, um how many tests have been scored. So if you know you have two hundred and fifty sixth graders or two hundred and fifty eighth graders, you're watching, it'll be like fifty students are scored. Like they're watching their numbers, like it's crazy how much they're watching and then um. It's, it's scary. Um, and then it's immediately starting to dissect what that is. Principals will know ahead of time, you know, if they, if they're struggling, if they've had a teacher PLC, a particular teacher classroom where there have been, you know, potential. You know, problems, issues, I mean, they're, I mean, they're, they're just watching it. I mean, this, this is, this is the finale, right, of what's been happening that school year. So I mean, it's immediate. Um, they're looking, some schools will actually have um. Like their instructional leadership team meeting at the end of the year, analyzing data that's come in already. Um, we're putting together little charts for the schools of what we know at that point in time, we're, we're changing the date, like Kathleen does it every single week. Like this is what the data is on, you know, June second, then she's like, this is the data on June seventh. I know, we shared this with Lori too. I mean, they're just, they're, they're hungry for it to, because what, sometimes what they'll end up doing is like they're creating their master schedule. And so it's, how, how do I need to adjust the master schedule? Am I adjusting teaching assignments? Am I looking at this thinking I need more intervention sections the next school year? So there, it's like, that's the time where you have to be responsive and, I mean, obviously you're coming back in the fall with your teachers and looking at data again, but it's, like, it's immediate.
They don't share it with me right away. Because I started placing like, you know. It's stressful, you know, when it comes in and especially when it's not what you're expecting.
Yeah, the middle school principals are pretty, um, we have a principal retreat, um, we had that on August first and it's pretty. We share the data, all the principals see all the data. So all levels see all of it and um we had a newer employee to us this school year and kind of made that comment and says, you, you share everybody's data? Like, that's okay. And that's our culture here. Like, you see it all. You are with your, the middle school principals are sitting there with the elementary. And I, high school administrators all looking at it and, you know, it's, it's, we, uh, we all own all the kids, they're all our responsibility. And so it's. We do and it's.
Yeah, I like that because, I mean, an elementary kid is eventually going to be a middle school kid and a middle school kid is going to be a high school kid. So if you're not all in it together and you think that you just own your little piece, then that's not the way. But you're, well, Jamie, you're right, because if I were a high school principal.
Oh, yeah.
I would be looking at some of those scores going. Okay, what do we need to do for the incoming freshmen? And I know we do some things prior to this, like schooling and starting for kids, but. That would concern me.
Yeah, we build transition worksheets too between um fifth grade to sixth grade and then eighth to ninth. And so um the smarter bounce assessment data goes into that spreadsheet and it's one metric that we're using to identify students for. Uh, we have at the ninth grade level an intensified algebra class. It's, it's a two period block that's, that supports students who need that extra help. We have read one eighty classes for students who need support in reading. So all that data is being plugged in the second we get it to, like I said again, just trying to build that master schedule ahead of time. Um, who are the teachers making, you know, we try to tell teachers their assignment before they go away for the summer, all of those kind of things. So as fast as that data comes in, we're acting on it.
That was going to be my follow up question. So thank you for pointing that out because I, I know most people in the room that live this every day. First, people listening don't. No, we're looking at once a year data here. What, I mean, this data, like, how are you assessing them on a, you know, can you get this data? Okay, we're down in math. In the eighth grade, okay, now. Do we go a month out and how do we assess them? Constantly assessing before we get to this test. Expect better results out of this.
Yeah, so we have um what's called universal screeners that we use at elementary. You've probably heard us talk about Ames Web testing. And those are sort of our predictors, like what students need extra support, how do we get them in their win time, what I need groups? At middle school, we're using map testing and middle school's a little bit harder because to get kids in intervention, it's a semester long class. And then you're taken away and elective to do it. So the way that elementary operates and the kind of supports we can offer is significantly different than what happens at a middle school or high school. Because you're on that semester schedule, you're stuck to the, you know, the periods of the day. So there's a few complicating factors that go into, what does that look like? And you know, what's the right curriculum for students and, and all of those? So it's, that's, um, we have a assessment team that's meeting. We started last year, we meet every, twice a month. And we're working on those kind of systems and structures like right now, like what can we do to improve it? How do we, you know, do we have the right type of diagnostic assessments? We have the right curriculum that aligns with that. So that's, that's the work of that group right now.
Do you remember the intervention class we saw last year at Mountain View? So that's what.
Yeah.
So not to be excuses in that, I'm also looking at a few of these schools, elementary and middle schools. Um, our schools are overfilled significantly. Corresponding way.
Right.
Um, it's not helping fit that way.
Right. I was wondering that with Mountain View, you know, it's a lovely place, it's one of our, so overcrowded and. Yeah, their biggest middle school, it's overcrowded. We need any middle schoolers, you can count out that population, but. I mean, they're not satisfied with thirty two percent.
So no. No, principals mortified.
Yeah.
It, I mean, yes.
And certainly not, I mean, reflective of who, I mean, of the expectation we have, but. But you're right, though, that school is overcrowded.
Yeah, it's, you know, there's others where the elementary, I'm not as quick with the numbers.
Well, so we're, we were forty two this year. Our benchmark is seventy.
Big jump.
Yeah, we might need to uh look at that bit. But we're gonna still, it keeps turning. Not a bad look for us. We're gonna give it our best. That's what we always do.
That's just to go from thirty two to seventy is.
But you have to look at cohort data though.
Yes.
So what were last year's seventh graders, their numbers moving up is what will be next year's.
And the seventies, the, it would be the eighth grade total middle school score. I mean, for Mountain View, Mountain View just needs to go up thirty two. I mean, they need to go back up to forty four.
Yeah, they're talking about the entire district.
Right.
And the other thing that's hard too is that these, these numbers that you see, you know, principals are looking at cohort students as they move. And they can see gaps closing, even though the next cohort coming in, they already knew we're struggling and all of a sudden it's like, well, gosh, we got to reach them even greater. Well, that's the hard thing when you get these different cohorts that cycle in, it's really looking at the cohort as it moves. Are we shrinking the gap with that cohort, even though I got a different group coming in? And it's going to be even harder to try to reach these goals that keep increasing, but that's the other piece that you don't get to see. But this is a snapshot with new groups coming through every time, so.
Yeah, you're not asking the same kids to improve on it, you're asking new kids to.
And you already know what you're probably getting and you're trying to shrink that to, to get them even higher.
Yeah.
And what doesn't help the district is they, I've experienced this, true, you did. You can have an amazing cohort, so let's say eighth graders and the seventh graders are really struggling. So next year, that gap looks like everybody got back, sat, sat back. It's not the case at all. What you'd actually be asking is the, the cohort that struggles, we need to move you two grade levels to get you up to where the classroom was. Those kind of struggles that, to me, I wish they would report more cohort. Information because I think that's a better picture of the school.
Well, um, we know that when schools are overcrowded, discipline issues can happen. No secret, so let's talk about that. We changed this slide a little bit for you. I'm going to explain this real quick. And that to be, yeah.
Yes. Uh, yeah. Okay, so disproportionality.
Yeah.
So, um, if you look in the third column over where it says twenty twenty four goal and there's a number one there. So the goal there, when we think about a number one with no disproportionality means that, let's say I'm Asian, for instance. When I have a one there means that for every one student who would be identified as having, you know, Asian heritage. That for every one student in that group, then one student in the entire population would be suspended. So there's a one to one ratio, there's no disproportionality. So when you look down that second column and I look at American Indian or Alaska native and you see one point two nine. What that means is for every one out of the whole group, that one point two nine students identifying with American Indian heritage. Would be, would be suspended, which means that they're being over identified for suspension rates. When I look at Asian and you see point two seven. That means for every one out of the entire population, it's only point two seven or a quarter of a person, right? So I would need to suspend, I mean, it's, it's one fourth, you say that the right way? So in that case, Asian students are, I want to say like they're being under suspended because we definitely don't want to. But they're, yeah, so you really want, so looking at that baseline number, you really want, so when I, I was looking at twenty twenty three. Um, so then if you go to the twenty twenty four, when you go to American Indian, Alaska native, all of a sudden you'll see it jump to two point one five. You're like, oh, my goodness.
Right.
Again, the N value of students matters because some of our groups have such small numbers of students. It's like when I've showed you graduation rates before where we've had four students who were in the um native Hawaiian or Alaska. Or Pacific Islander students, you get one student who doesn't graduate, all of a sudden your grad rate seventy five percent. We're like, oh, my goodness, it's seventy five percent. Well, there was only four students to start with. And so some of those student groups up there are so small, we're going to see that number swing. And so if this was a real statistical analysis, we may void out some of these groups because the numbers, they're swinging too much. And it's not, it's not statistically sound to make that determination. So our biggest groups, when you look at white, multiracial and Hispanic Latino, those are our biggest groups. So those three, like if you were to ask me as a, you know, mathematician, those are pretty sound, large and valued groups. Like you won't see that swing as you will with like our American Indian, um, Asian, black, Sudanese and Pacific Islander, those populations. So, so really looking for a one to one ratio, less than one, you're being underrepresented over one. You're over.
Close to one.
You want to be close to one, yeah.
That's really key, right?
Yeah.
How are we feeling in general about district? The fact that you know these numbers, I feel like you have these numbers in your head. So we don't necessarily have the numbers of those smaller groups.
Like the N values of those, yeah.
As you're thinking about it, if you wanted to give an opinion, what would be your opinion on kind of how we're doing? Yeah, I see a jump from one something to two something, I automatically alarm bells are going off. Because we're disproportionately spending.
Well, I think Kelly, I think highlighted those that are our largest populations.
Yeah.
So when you look at white, multiracial and Hispanic, the fact that those are moving closer to one. Right, is a good sign.
Right, yeah.
So when you see Hispanic Latino going from one point four seven, dropping down to one point two and moving closer, again, that's a larger population. And so the fact that it's moving closer to one is a good indicator of the work that's being done. Not dismissing the twos that you see up there, but as Kelly pointed out. When you have a small N size like we do in Native America, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, and Native American, Alaska native. Um, one or two students can wildly swing the percentage. And so if you have um, one or two students that are having a series of rough days. It can exaggerate what that looks like. So I think what Sarah and the team and Josh and the team do, they they look at. And I think one of the other things that you'll see, um, when you're switching to spring, we're looking at discipline and those sorts of things. Is assistant principals and principals are looking at this on a regular basis. And once a month they are coming through and they're looking and one of the things they're looking at is their disproportionality. So I'd say just overall, the largest N sizes, which the ones that Kelly pointed out are fairly good indicators. Of where we are in general. Um, but we don't dismiss um, the smaller N sizes because we also know that that's. Something that we have.
Is for us within valuing that.
I think so. I think you answered the question perfectly. I think the way you explained that.
I was thinking that too. We could like denote something on there, like what, there's some type of symbol that would show that those are very.
Or at least what percentage of the population they represent.
Yeah.
Because one of the things you want, right, is if you represent, you know, if you're eighty percent of the population. We'd anticipate that there would be eighty percent of the discipline, right? If there's no disproportionality.
Right.
And so one of the things that might help in one is we've looked at the past is putting out rather than just the pure N value. Um, and being that statistical term.
No, it's the. And then a lot of times you want to see it, so because there's no significance in an N size so small, even though we're trying to articulate everything. There's a notation in there that so that you know how low the number is that can completely uh, skew the. The numerical value. So you'll see a lot of just X. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, if you were to go to OSPI report card for some groups, you'll see the data suppressed. Because the N value is too small and they don't want students to be able to be identified, right? So they'll, you won't, they'll put the little, you know, asterisks on there and then it is, it's it's suppressed, so.
I think the most important thing I heard you say was that principals aren't looking at this. So that makes us happy. They're looking at this on a daily basis because as problems arise, it means that they're having to buy his check.
Right.
By looking at this and saying, okay, when I go to administer discipline. I've got this in the back of my mind to make sure, am I fairly administering that discipline?
Well, thank you for explaining that, though, because it made a big difference. It makes a big difference.
And this one is the same, it's just by um, special populations. And so when you're looking at this one. What's important to know when you look at the row that says special education, so those are our students who are being served with an IEP. That student can also be multilingual. So these rows, the same student could be in the special education row. As in the multilingual row, the student can also be low income, the student can also be homeless. So these are not discrete categories as like you saw on the previous slide. So this could be one student showing up multiple times in this data point. So again, you can see, um. Kind of the where we were twenty twenty three and that second column over to where we were in twenty twenty four. And again, these populations are going to be much smaller than the total district population. So again, they're more, there could be more swing in here. Um, but I mean, but still, it's data that you want to look at.
Sorry to interrupt. Has our homeless population increased or decreased?
I'd have to ask Beth or Josh that question or Marilia.
We have, um, we're.
Yeah, good point.
About one ninety right now. This is, we have one ninety one. But last year we were up, we were at, um, I want to say two ninety seven. And that was up what we're gonna bring to the share by now.
So we're down a little bit right now.
Well, that's just because it's.
And again, this is compared to the whole population. So using that same measurement as you saw on the previous screen.
It's um, nice to see a decrease in special education, though.
And then multilingual, really, that's no disproportionality when you have a point oh four. So low income, you know, I I'd want to do a little digging there and especially homeless. I'd want to do a lot of digging there around what's going on.
Homeless or graduation data tells. It's struggling the most.
Well, let's talk about that.
Right, yeah.
And these are the things principals and assistants are also looking at, right? So when they're, when Sarah and the team are looking at this. They're disaggregated by all the different measures. So that's one of the things that they're looking at. And in fact, when we do administer discipline. You know, there are things that, you know, we check, that's a student uh, served in special education. Because there's laws and things that come in. So they're looking at that on a daily basis.
So the other part of the goal is the advanced coursework, because we want to see more students taking advanced coursework and we exceeded. This benchmark, we, we met this benchmark uh, already, but. We need to figure out what to really do with this whole terms of taking advanced coursework, but.
Yeah, we talked about that, like, how do we, how do we alter the benchmark? Do we make it fifteen percent? Like, what do we do? What does that look like? So yeah, that's just amazing that our students want to be challenged in different ways. And so, yeah, this was, this was pretty exciting to see.
They also want to take more CTE courses, right? They, I mean, they do. And if we had more space, they could. Um, oh, you know, goal five, that's our. That's my uh. Like my heart right there. Um. We were supposed to be at ninety five percent this year. We'll get there. I know we will. I mean, we continue to make steady growth, but this year we down a little bit.
Our number might be going up a little bit more. Um, OSPI is extending our window for cleaning up grad data. One of our biggest, or I said, say one of our biggest, but a huge challenge for us is our students who just disappear and we don't know where they go. So it takes so much research to find, you know, students are moving someplace else, but we have to have verification. That so say they move to Texas, we have to have verification that they enrolled in a different school. So we have to get something from that school, et cetera. So even today, Steve Sholen um, tracked down, I want to say there was like three more kids or something that they tracked down who went someplace else. So we have a short window left that we can, we can, we do these updates in the seeders to get more graduates. So we're, we're hoping, but that's, we've got to track down kids when they move, go someplace else. We have to have the records and. So that family can't just tell us they moved wherever. We have to have verification that they enrolled in another school. So there's this huge responsibility that we have to the district to. Where'd they go? What did they do? Did they really enroll? How do we get proof? So.
And then if if they enroll, do you just not, do you not count them anymore because they're not your responsibility anymore?
They're off, yeah, they're off rest. So when someone, a student does that, it helps us in two ways. It changes our denominator. Because now we have one less student and then we have one, then they're out of the non-grad rate as well. So if a student moves and goes someplace else, it's kind of a double positive, yes, rather than if we just get a graduate. It's it's a single positive, but yeah, so it's, yeah.
It's a good positive, but. But what we really look at, it's nine point four percent of kids didn't graduate. And and now what?
Yep.
Because we don't give up on kids.
Yeah.
And what are they gonna do when they, you know, when they get done? Graduation Alliance, GED, I mean, what is it? Open doors? I don't know.
And some are still with us. So some students, um, I want to say we have close to fifty that are with us right now as like a fifth year senior. Because they just need more time to get their credit. So even though it's not showing up there in the four year cohort. That's another thing to be proud of, that the students are still with us. They're going to get that diploma and that's what matters the most, right? We want that four year to be, you know, a hundred if it can be, but if if that student is sticking with it and has that staying power. Then that's, that's fantastic. So, yeah, so there's kind of, there's two different buckets of kids that we're really looking at, right? We need to keep them in the system till they graduate and then probably tracking down these others to make sure they're on some path to.
The question is then it comes. The question is, when did the uh, COVID year? You had some waivers you could do. When did that end?
This is Kelly's favorite topic. Well, Paul, the last two years, they they kept taking things off each time. And so now they're all gone. So if for the class of twenty twenty five, there isn't anything left. So note, there's no waivers for the pathway, no waivers for credit. The only thing left, there's one thing that we can do as a district. And then we can waive two elective credits. It's a, it's a local district waiver and it wasn't associated with COVID at all. So they're all gone now. So the schools are in a little bit of a panic mode because there's still this, there's this huge mindset out there still with about doing online. Kids are not earning six credits a year when they're doing online. And so that's part of some of the data that you see. Kids will leave us to go to an online school. They come back, they're credit deficient or, you know, they're with us in online and they're not earning their six credits. And so it's, so we gotta figure that out.
Can't remember what's in here. Higher number of students coming in in junior and senior year. Completely deficient in.
That's in here on a future, on a future slide. Yeah. Yeah, like, oh, we had a student, um, we have our, we have, um, every couple of weeks, we have a meeting with Eli Hill. And then the two high schools of admitting students in the program. We just had a new kid enroll a senior with four point six five credits, I think it was. And it's like, where, where are these kids coming from? And then this student, the goal is to get them to that ten credit mark and then they want to go to Clover Park. So they'll be with us for this short amount of time and then they head off. But it's, it's like, what is happening with kids? But we're still, that, that's, that's an impact to our grad base right now. That's, that's on here because all that. It's just still surfacing for us, for these, for these kids, so.
I gotta tell you, we also run a schedule at the high school where there's wiggle room for kids. I mean. I mean, so we, I don't know, other schedules, master schedules, like, or, I mean, provide increased opportunities for students. But like, if you're in our, you're in our system six period day, like, you can't fail.
Yeah.
Twenty four opportunities in ninth grades nine through twelve, need twenty four credits. Few kids, we have kids who come with some credits from middle school, but really it's twenty four for twenty four.
Yeah, but then we're ranked against other school districts, right? So you go to Bethel, who's on a five period day. Students can earn thirty credits in their four years and Bethel's grad requirements are twenty six. So students can fail four full credits and still graduate. Other districts are on a four period. You know, whether it's an AV block or however they do it, but those kids can earn thirty two credits. And then, you know, they might have a twenty four credit graduation requirement. They might up it and have twenty six. But it's like our kids are not playing in the same, you know, not, they're not playing by the same rules as other students. So our six period day is a, is a challenge for students. You can't, you can't mess up a single time. Or you're not graduating without doing some summer school credit recovery, putting you in an online period during the day. We double you up on classes. Using some type of credit competency, like it's like, we, we do everything we can to try to make up for.
So if that's something the board's interested in studying, um, we would probably entertain that, just to go with.
I think that's an interesting con. I know, I went to college in quarters. I had friends that went and it was a semester system. I thrive in order system because I can be like a pit bull on three classes.
Right.
And I got very great. These, my friends would have four or five classes. A string out for six months or five. And it was more difficult. So I, with that, I wonder. A problem for, definitely for some of our students that. Your classes, a little more time in those classes, would it accomplish more?
Yeah.
I was involved when we had the. Things that you have to consider when you look at those is we want Bang City right here with us because the cost is tremendously higher.
It's just something you would want.
Four period day. Oh, yeah. So your staffing in that is, is much higher. And that's, that's why we left it, honestly. Is it got down to a cost situation? So Kelly, I have a question. When, when we're looking at these numbers, you know, nineties is such. It doesn't take many kids to depress. In other words, the higher you go, it takes less kids to, to. Bring down that percentage who may not make it through, correct?
Your last ten percentage. Because you're getting down to one, you're talking, you're talking ten kids can affect.
Yeah. That's the thing where, like, all the measures we have in place, like, we've done all of these things and that's what's increased our grad rate over the year. And now you get to this place where you're like, what else do we do? How can we help the student? And, and we have a, we have a spreadsheet that's all the non-grads and it's, it's kid name by kid name. And then you go in and you're like, looking at the aces that this child has. And you're like, what do we do as a school district to overcome those things when there's, you know, I mean, you just named the situation that child has been in. It's like, how does the school district, what do you do? And so.
The other thing that, and Kelly mentioned this before too, cohorts, that we don't get to see because some of those kids are staying. So we track that same group, even though we're at ninety percent and they graduate and all of a sudden that graduated is ninety six to ninety seven. But they graduate following, but we're not looking at that. And that's the other thing that you don't get to see is these kids are staying. And then we're tracking them and that percentage, even though it's not on time, but it's gonna go way up because out of those fifty kids. Thirty five, forty graduated, now we're up into the higher nineties.
And don't forget, all of the students who stay past senior year in the DLC or the community based program count against our grad rates. So Kathleen will like add in, if we've got fifteen kids, that's two point whatever percent on here. And that's not, that's not on here. So that's another compounding factor. And up to twenty two, yeah. Yeah, so that's another.
So yeah, if I can emphasize that a little bit more, right? So this is not just students in community base. So just as a reminder, um, students who are served with an IEP have a right to be in school now up to their twenty second birthday. So we had a change in case law, so it was up to their twenty first birthday, now it's up to their twenty, or the year they turn twenty one. Now it's up to their twenty second birthday. So that's gonna include all the kids who go to our community based transitions. But at all, there is a number who continue to stay at the high school in their um, special education service program. Beyond their fourth year, right? Because their IEP demands it and they still have IEP goals. And so, um, you know, we went from, was it, I think, two years ago, we had about sixteen interns or so at CBT. Last year we were twenty six and now we're over thirty. And so all of those kids are counting in the non-grad.
Not asking you to do more work or change it perhaps, but it would be interesting to see another column of those groups, how much they're increasing every year.
Yeah.
And how that's affecting here.
Yeah, because we have it on our non-grad, it's on our, it's on our non-grad sheet. We have the students and we say they're DLC, they're CBT, they're, you know, yes.
Any, any kid almost that is continuing their education would be nice to see that number. In some ways, if it's an IEP or. Or somebody. And I was saying, maybe that was something that you could study in too deeper.
Yeah, yeah, that would be really good to see.
So, so not a suggestion or how, but my question is, with all the various programs now we have to help kids graduate, which is amazing. And now we have a large group of kids who are not graduating because laws have changed and such. And kids dropping out of those things. Do we have adequate resources to track all these kids down? And to do those things? Because I'm hearing Steve is out tracking down kids and I know Steve has a lot more work to do than that. So knowing what we had before all this happened, knowing the staffing now, we have adequate resources or do we as a board need to help? Move, move the needle.
I think it's something we should consider and look at.
Yeah.
Because if our scores are going down because we don't have the resources to track all this, then that's something we're getting. Definitely dig a look at.
I'm also wondering, and because you, you can see what we've noticed after the second year of this strategic plan that, you know, math is a concern. And it, we just talked about the increase in the number of students qualified in specialized, but I'm also wondering if the board would entertain a proposal from us. To um, study further different scheduling options for high schools. Ben Fitz.
I was there until I heard it could cost double.
It doesn't cost double. They, they take double the classes, but it doesn't necessarily cost double.
You go to eight period days, it's, it's substantially.
Yes.
But I will tell you, we can't really study anything without space.
Right.
So, um, but I'm just wondering if you would at some point entertain a proposal to allow us to study.
Well, I think it's in general, if you're talking about twenty four for twenty four, like you don't have any wiggle room to mess up. So not, not necessarily just specifically study four period days, just study that in general and say, how do we create? Or just stick to that twenty four for four, how to be, create space for, for air, because it's going to be air. And that's kids.
You also have kids that want to take other classes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, they want to take a, a C, another CTE class or they fail. It's, it's not just designed for students that fail. They give them access, but that gets all in that sense.
If you're a four year band kid.
Yep.
And you, and band is your life. You want to be in band and you're in Joe Carl's class. And you, and band is your life. You wanna be in band and you're in Joe Carl's class. On a twenty-four credit period, you know, six period, you don't have a lot of wiggle. And so, you know, you're in this band class and you, then you can't go be in. Band and culinary or band and something else because you really, these are four-year programs. And so a six-period day gets really high constraints in that way as well.
I guess we'll save that for more discussion. Any questions for Kevin since the experience that as a student?
Well, we have people in here that experienced it as educators.
I mean, there's some that loved it, some that didn't. There's educators who loved it, some who didn't. I thought we were gonna have a small war when it went away for a lot of reasons, but um. It, at that time it was cost. And there were, there were a lot of positives to it. There were some challenges.
When there are other, there are all sorts of options. So at some point, if we, if we bring a proposal to you and you would entertain us, like studying for a year or however long it would take, if we have space. You know, maybe you would consider that. So keep that in the back of your mind too.
I think it's a broader study. It's not just about graduation rate. About how do we improve our scores? Ballistic view of the whole thing, not just the graduation. How do we study more improvement everywhere?
Right? If, if you, you're a student who needs extra time and intervention, right? On a six-period day, there's very, like, when you go to middle school, it's, it's limit. And the only way you get there is by taking away elective. And so, hey, I wanna help you with math and by the way, you don't get it. That's hard.
Well, and as we expand these CTE programs and every, everybody I talk to in the community where I talk about. We wanna have aerospace, we have aerospace certification, we have all these certifications. You really see people light, light up because all going to college and not going to college. People start to, to see the importance of these, these CTE certifications, that we can send people right from high school into the career world. But they don't have the ability to, the time and the schedule that they have classes.
Those are some of the things that motivate other kids, keep them in school and, you know, keep them excited and motivated to take some of the.
Yeah, well, it could improve their graduation rate, but taking stuff they actually want.
That point you made about the space is really important because if you move off of a six-period day to either a four-period, five-period. A seven-period with two plans, whatever, it takes more classrooms to do it. So, I mean, just thinking about the space of our buildings right now. You, you'd have to have more rooms.
Okay, we could probably talk about this online, right? That's the exciting part though, right? And that's a big segment for being a board member is that you can help us really map out the future of this, of this entire district. So you know what's next? I mean, we're gonna take more of the board visits that align with these goal areas so you can see exactly what's happening on. Fourth calendar and I can be another copy of that if you want. And we're just gonna keep making sure you understand what's going on in our schools and um. You know, you'll see the school curriculum plan is coming pretty soon, but uh we keep working this plan. We keep it in front of us, we keep student learning at our focus and uh. And little by little, we are, I mean, we are really becoming one of the top performing school districts in the state. We're very proud of it. So thanks for your support for that. And I'm telling you, the people I get to work with every day, incredible. That's why I'm gonna go, this, this is incredible for. But really, they are exceptional people that will work twenty-four seven if they had to, so. Anything from you all? Sarah, anything? I love that picture. And thanks for the conversation tonight. Um, thank you very much. It was a great presentation. Onward tomorrow, right? We're continuing. Any board discussion?
Thank you guys for the presentation. Um. You know, to work, you guys do. Put together a presentation that shows the depth. That I'm sure it wasn't what you guys thought it would be. It was a little sobering for some of the scores. But yet you still showed it. You still talked about it. I appreciate that. We've never been a school district, or at least when I first got on, I think we, we kinda sometimes got presentations, like everything's great. Over these last nine years, your guys' presentations are not like that. It's, hey, we're doing good stuff. Here's some things we're still working on and we're gonna really dig in and get to the bottom of stuff. And. It's hard to show. It's hard to see is, but sometimes. And so, thank you.
Just, I, I think, you know, I mean, looking at a lot of these, but you realize those numbers are one snapshot. And the complexity behind those numbers. And it's really why I appreciate that, you know, presentation. Because you, I have a lot of confidence that you and you're understanding that complexity and you're building solutions. For those complexities best you can. And, um, and that's one of the things that I think is hard because the numbers are the snapshot. We just don't take into consideration what came before and what's happening after. But um, so thank you for explaining a lot of that and for doing the hard work.
I think I build strengths. I mean, it's not, a lot of non-ideal stuff on the screen, but talking about it, you should build trust that. Celebrate the wins, work on the stuff we need to work on.
Again, congratulations, eighth out of two forty-nine and lots of different dynamics.
Not about presentation, uh having had some time to think since the last board meeting and then. Give some more background stuff. I would be interested in doing the legislative role more of a support. If I can work with Kim, what he's done so far, Lori and all that. I just needed some time to consider what. So, yeah.
Well, I know you have a new job and, yeah, I know, I mean, we got the, we, we got the top ten legislative things completed. Um as a group, everybody was able to contribute on that. So that's, that's taken care of and turned in. So that's all done. But yeah, I think. Yeah, I think you'd be the perfect person.
I'll just let you know, in February is, in the early part of February is when they have. You've probably been to it before, down in, so you know what you're getting into. First couple of years I did it. And then by the third year, I'm like, I, I'm not taking a weekend, I'm skiing. My style. The other question I have is. Having heard when this, when the court case came down, I'd really be interested to know not only how many kids are now in. With us till the twenty-two, but what is, what is the cost to the district and what is the state actually ponying up? I think at the end of the year, whatever is the appropriate time, because I think that's one of the discussions that we should. Be pushing around the state is, it's great, I mean, unfunded mandates are wonderful, but uh. I'm really curious. Super seniors. And then what would you guess, Karen, just as a wild guess, what that additional cost is gonna be to the district?
Well, the cost of. Or DLC. Just, if you just look at Sam and you take a look at it. In teacher, at least two are usually more. DLC.
Well, if that would be a ton of work, I'd be really interested at the end of this year, when, like I said. I don't, I'll be in front, I, I have concerns to stay. As not funding to make sure that's not bigger.
Oh, yeah, it is probably.
It's, yeah, it's hit and miss, right? Money for a year and get the next year it's gone.
Thank you for all your work.
You guys want me to do it at my own pace?
Any other items for the session?
Back in balance.
You know, back in balance.